Good afternoon, I would like to call this meeting to order. I'll call the regular meeting agenda item number two. It's invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Perez.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we go through these holidays, fill us with your light and love. Fill us with the joy and spirit of gratitude and generosity that we may truly be blessings to others. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice forever.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I would like to call agenda item number four. Agenda item number four, I'm gonna call out of order, Mr. Flores, just to let you know.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address the proclamation on behalf of Martin Garza Day. Ms. Carrillo, can we take care of that proclamation? Can we ask Mr. Garza to approach the...
Of course.
Just in case people don't know who he is.
Yeah. Is your son here yet?
Yes.
He is? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna try to get through this without a tear. The proclamation reads as follows. Jorge Martin Garza...
And I'm gonna hold you because, you know, we are promoting the family unit as a city. If you don't mind, I would like to have your wife and your children up here in front, Mr. Garza. So, and anybody else you would like to bring up to the front?
But I'm gonna give the opportunity to do that, Mayor Fajmiso.
Yes. I know you're a small family, Mr. Garza, but if you want us to move the furniture around, we'll accommodate that. Thank you, Ms. Carrillo, for your...
Ready?
We're ready.
Mayor Council, the proclamation reads as follows. Jorge Martin Garza Jr. is a Mission native, having graduated from Mission High School in May of 1988. Earned a degree from the University of Texas Pan American in Police Administration. In addition to an associate's degree in Law Enforcement from Laredo Junior College. He also attended the Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Police Academy in San Bonito. Jorge Garza served in the Mission Police Department for nearly 22 years, beginning as a patrolman in 1991, working his way through the ranks of patrolman, detective, corporal, sergeant, lieutenant, assistant chief, and ultimately, the chief of police. Jorge, in March 2013, the Mission City Council named Garza interim city manager. Six months later, Garza took on the role of city manager, where he has served for the last five and a half years. Jorge, after 26 years with the City of Mission, Martin Garza Jr. has announced his retirement to devote more time to his loving wife Isabel and his four sons, Brandon, Kristen, Ryan, and William. Jorge, the City of Mission thanks Martin Garza Jr. for his many years of dedicated service to our city and its citizens. Mission is a better place today because Garza served demonstrating great leadership and commitment. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim December 20th, 2018, Martin Garza Jr. Day in the City of Mission, and wish him the best in his retirement. Proclaimed on this the 17th day of December, 2018.
Before I bring Mr. Garza in, I would like to recognize and accept a motion.
I move to accept the proclamation.
I second.
Second, we have a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We unanimously approve this proclamation, Mr. Garza, on behalf of your service to the city.
Mayor City Council, good evening. What a blessing, really. It's truly been a blessing for not only myself, but for my entire family. And at the end of the day, the 26 and a half years, the people who kept me here was this group of people standing, not behind me, but standing beside me. That's what they've done the 26 and a half years. But it's, you know, it's been a great ride. Beautiful career, wonderful profession of public service. And I wanna thank you, Mayor, the City Council, you know, all the directors that I got to work with for this opportunity. It's been a wonderful feeling, but at the same time, I wanna thank you for the direction, the guidance that you have provided to us to be able to move forward with other projects, getting all the projects going for the City of Mission, and it's just been great. But I wanted to spend more time with my family, and it's been truly a blessing to be a part of this, and I hope that I can be of service too in the near future. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and come forth so you can receive your honor. And how are we gonna get a picture together? We'll come down, we'll come down.
Will we stay up here, and then they come right here? Montez, you come with us? And you all can be right here.
You all just come, and Asina, you can get it from there.
Yes, let them, it's a moment primero, and then all of us will go in front. Then we'll do the... Or it's, or it's, Mr., we'll go to the front over there. Let's go ahead.
Fighting?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
I don't like...
Now I will, we'll call for agenda item number three of a regular meeting with pride, joy, and a lot of distinction that our city has been shining in the last football season here. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to our acting city manager, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. With us today are veterans and memorial patriots that represented the city of Mission. So, we like to recognize their accomplishment. Obviously, they had a historic season that, you know, not only represented the city of Mission, but the whole region here in the valley. You know, one of the things that everyone noticed is we had support from all over the region for these group of young men that represented the city of Mission, the Mission School District, as well as the whole region here, as being the only valley team to advance, you know, where they advanced at this year's playoff. On behalf of the mayor, we have, we're gonna give each individual player a medal of appreciation for their hard work, their supporting, the communities that they went and represented. You know, their representation of Mission in the San Antonio area was tremendous. They were dedicated players that performed excellent as far as the game is concerned. Big congratulations to, as announced today, to Landry Gilpin, as he was awarded a Mr. Texas Football Player of the Year. That's a huge accomplishment, as he is the first as a valley athlete to be recognized with that award. So, congratulations, Mr. Gilpin, your team, and Landry, good job. All of you all represented the city of Mission, the region here. Thank you all, congratulations. Good job.
You want to tell me? You want to do this way?
Ralph, I mean, please, man.
Got all the jackets, man. Came, like, came, well, yeah, oil, yeah. No. Thank you. Thank you for giving that fact. Awesome. Thank you. When you're one of our city leaders, I'm speaking always over quite something just seventy meters. Awesome.
Or JPP.
The most active, all right, I'll see. Today, for your chair.
So?
Never in the fucking world.
So, did you really write in some...
No, make sure that you follow the place, so every face could be this, because this is gonna be documented for history, so when you come back in twenty years and you start looking at it, you're also live on Facebook.
These are patriots.
We look tall.
Money to the crown, bro.
I think he's in sports pictures already, he's got taken pictures.
Staring up there.
He made a few.
Thank you.
I got a letter or a card from Hobby, no money in there.
I do wanna let you know that we do have some cake and refreshments out there for, on behalf of the celebration for the historical moment that we've had here in Mission with our young youth, you know, just, I was very pleased to hear that there's 240 participants in his football team. Wow, you know, from a hundred that he had been, you know, about five years ago. I was telling him that indirectly, he is keeping the dropout rate in Mission, you know, very, very low by keeping this, our youth in school, you know, with these activities that he has. So, again, congratulations, Coach, and enjoy the cake and punch out there and the drinks. But, we have to conduct business in the city, so we're gonna have to call another agenda item, and this is agenda item number five. And I'm gonna call Mr. Perez to begin the agenda item number five.
Yes, Mayor, and I do have Ms. Idal Levman, Deputy City Manager, who would be making the presentations for our employees.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and our general public that are here today. Today, we have the distinct honor of recognizing our volunteer, I mean, our employees that are celebrating with the City of Mission in five-year increments. And so, we recognized them last week, the entire bunch, at a breakfast that we had. But today, we will only honor those that are celebrating 20 years and above. But before we do that, we do have three employees that are retiring this year. And we've already heard Mr. Martin Garza, as we did a proclamation for him, so he's one that's retiring. But at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Raúl Martínez Barajas.
Mr. Barajas, is he here? I know his daughter's looking for him. Where are you? Okay.
Hello, Mr. Barajas.
So, Mr. Barajas here is retiring after 15 years of service with the City of Mission. He represents the Facility Maintenance Department. And so, Mr. Barajas has always done a great job with great pride and integrity, and always greeting our citizens and everyone that comes in with a friendly smile. So today, we give him the distinct honor of recognizing him for his service. Mr. Barajas will be bringing in the new year, doing things that he likes with his family, spending quality time with them. His last day of employment is the 31st of December. And so, I would like for the Council to present him with a gift as well. So, Mr. Barajas. Quisiera nos este presentarles un obsequio de parte del municipio de Misión. Si gusta pasar al frente con el señor alcalde y concilio.
Gracias por su servicio.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ana Casanova to please join us up here. So, Ms. Ana has dedicated 31 years of total dedication and commitment to the City of Mission. She came and started as a receptionist. Thereafter, she moved very quickly into the Finance Department, working her way up as a payroll supervisor. And Ana has done an outstanding job. We're going to miss her friendly personality and her efficiency in the department. We wanna say congratulations to Ms. Ana, and we wish you the best as you also bring in the new year, enjoying, I understand you're gonna watch lots of movies, is what she said, and enjoy family with, enjoy the time with your family. So, Council also has a nice gift and would like to take a picture with you today.
I'd enjoy and honor, I present you on behalf of the City Council, and then also the citizens of Mission.
Thank you.
Your new door for the time. Presenting you.
Invite me to the movie.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Yes.
Mayor and Council, may I have you come over to the front so that we can recognize all the other honorees tonight?
Nice to be in the suite. Okay?
So, celebrating 20 years of service to the City of Mission is Adrian Avila. Next up is Paula Banda. Way to go, Paula.
Thank you.
Richard Castillo, celebrating 20 years. Rogelio Cabazos. Eusebio de la Garza. Jaime de la Garza. Javier Flores. He may not be here. Okay. The next one? Jorge Joel Flores. Elizabeth Hernandez. Oh, she's serving cake. Jose Hernandez. We'll give Elizabeth hers.
Yeah, she's coming.
She's coming. Elizabeth Hernandez from the Executive Department. Mr. Ray López. Ms. Ana Rodríguez with the Library. She indicated that she may not have made it, but she was going to try really hard. Not sure if she's here. Ana Rodríguez. Jorge E. Rodríguez. George Rodríguez. Valentin Rodríguez. Manuel Salinas. Okay. And the last 20 years is Samuel Segura. Couple more twenties, Mr. Michael Silva. Mr. Salvador Trevino. Mr. George Wyant. Celebrating 25 years of service, Mr. Julio De Leon. Mr. José Luna. Mr. Ezekiel Navarro. Ms. Adela Ortega. Mr. Reynaldo Pérez. Javier Ramón. Celebrating 30 years of service to the city, we've got two employees, Mr. Julio Flores. And another retiree, Mr. Kevin Thompson. And last but not least, this young lady has been dedicated, I think, her entire life to the City of Mission. She started when she was crawling, because she's been with us for 40 years. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Belinda Garza with the Library. Belinda says she's good for another 40, right? Again, congratulations to all of our honorees tonight. We do have some refreshments for the families. We thank them for joining us as well, so please join us for some refreshments.
I'll just wait for a minute. At this time, I would like to call regular meeting agenda number six, Ms. Enriquez, for the report for the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Enriquez?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, great things continue to happen at the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Upcoming, our major event is the Health Fair, in conjunction with the Mission Regional Medical Center, of course, and City of Mission. It will be our 24th Annual Mission Community Health and Wellness Fair, occurring on Saturday, January 12, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. to noon, taking place at our own Mission Event Center on Sherry and the Expressway. It is free to the public, and blood tests, well, free blood tests will be provided to the first 500 people. And also, Father Roy will be kicking off the Health Fair with a prayer at 7:30. So, as of now, we are seeking sponsorships. So, I do have sponsorship forms, and we can do that via email as well. We have 14 tables filled. We do have room for 22 more. So, if anyone is interested in sponsoring us, please contact us. We will also be doing some media to invite sponsors from all ages, television, radio, and social media. Chamber Business, we have nine new members. One individual, Matt Rusak, he rejoined the chamber, and he's, of course, for himself. Mission Regional Medical Center rejoined the chamber at an upgraded membership. And the hospital is providing 800 full-time employees, so creating 800 jobs for the City of Mission. And RGV Vision Media went ahead and came in as a new member and upgraded their membership, and they have about five to eight full-time employees. Then, we also have new members for Signs Digital Print, and they have six full-time employees. The Rick Brown Family Funeral Home, they are eight full-time employees. And then, Ellie Banzier has eight full-time employees. Double R Quality Homes LLC, only one employee. Mom's Place, it's a catering company, and it's two employees. And then Jimmy's Egg, it's about five to eight employees that they're creating economic prosperity. Moving on to ribbon cuttings, we will be working a month in advance, so we can give ample time to everyone. So, in the month of January, we have Mom's Place off of Griffin in Mission, and that's going to be on January 4, which we will share the calendar. We also have Jimmy's Egg off of Sherry on January 11. RGV Electric Supply off of Trinity Suites Mission. Terry Physical Therapy, this is their second location, and they will be in Benitas, and we will be doing a ribbon cutting on January 24. Brisas del Mar off of Conway. We are tentative, but it should be about the first, the end of January, early February. And then, Jojo's House of Style off of Griffin, and it will be also either mid-January or late. The Chamber has also released, as of last Friday, a membership satisfaction survey. So, we are encouraging all current members and past members to complete a survey. We did send another reminder today. It's 18 questions, so we encourage everyone to take the survey. It's available on our Facebook page as well as the Chamber webpage. And then, a tourism update. We do have new updated photos, which we will be showcasing on our website. And we will also be recreating a brochure for tourism, so this brochure will be available to visitors. And we will also be shipping out to other visitor centers across Texas and upon request. Any questions?
Any questions for any of the council person?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Thank you, sir.
Same to you. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, departmental reports. Any of the council members want to address any of the departmental reports that are on your packet? This is the time.
Mayor, there's no questions. I would like to approve the reports as presented.
I entertain the motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign, motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number eight, citizens' participation. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on the agenda? Come forth, identify yourself for the record, and your name and address, please. And I do want to let you know that you have three minutes maximum.
Hello, Council, my name is Jessica Tenguma. I live on 3710 Centennial Street in Strayland Plantation. I came to talk today about the campout we had two Saturdays ago at Benson State Park. I don't know if any of you are aware of, Benson State Park is currently threatened at the moment with a border wall and a clearance about 150 feet from that wall. And I don't know if you all are aware of this, I am an outdoor educator, so this is a fact that sticks with me all the time, is that we only have 5% of our native habitat left in the valley. And that's due to a lot of agriculture, a lot of urbanization. And so, Benson State Park is one of the only places where you can see over 200 species of birds throughout the year. And that is a great use for ecotourism. We have a lot of people, but after we're done camping there, we saw a bunch of people just looking at birds and wildlife. What's really cool is my son, that was his first state park he ever visited in his life, and he likes to tell his friends that when he went there, he saw a bobcat skull. And as a mom, I really wouldn't let him touch it, but you know, it was spur of the moment thing, let him enjoy it, let him go outdoors and experience something other than a video game. And so, this was actually his first camping trip, and he enjoyed it, and he wants to go out and do this more. There are other families there as well, who, this is their first time camping, and I actually got to show them how to light a campfire, do the things like that. And, you know, it was a couple people, and we connected as a community, and we all shared this concern for this park. And so, we just wanted to come here and bring that up to you, because this is a part of Mission. And, you know, a lot of people have pride in the state of Texas, but people who have come from Mission Valley in general have great pride in the valley, and our state parks are a part of that. And so, we just wanted to see if, just bring up about support and bring awareness to the state parks, because I don't know how many of you have actually been to Benson State Park. Yeah, and so, it's great to see that, you know, people here, they love going there. I go there on Easter sometimes, go there during the breaks, I go there to unwind. It's a great part to have, but it's just with, you know, this border wall issue coming up, it's not, you know, it's in danger of closing. It might, you know, it could stay open, but there's a stigmatization, you know, when a border wall goes up, people don't want to go past that. There's that tree, the bald cypress tree in Abrams, it's over, they believe it's over 800 years old, and not that many people visit it, because you have to go past a border wall, and, you know, it's kind of scary to them to go beyond what they know. So, it's kind of a concern that, you know, if this border wall is built, we may not see it being utilized like our other state parks. Visitation since 2012 has increased, it's skyrocketed, all state parks across Texas. And that's 95 state parks. And Texas has grown a lot within the past couple of years, and they say that in order to keep up with the population of Texas, they would have to open three parks every year, and they haven't opened a park since the late 80s, I believe. So, to lose a state park to something that, you know, could be prevented is something that is very tragic, especially when, you know, the Hispanic-Latino community is one of the biggest communities that utilize state parks in Texas. And so, I have the article from Monitor, the person who organized the event wanted to see if you would like to take this with you, read about it. I have a lot of fun, this is what I do, this is my job.
I apologize for interrupting. I just want to remind the mayor and council of the three-minute rule.
Your three minutes are up now. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'd like to see the article, please. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other person that wants to address the council?
You can leave one on each one. I'm sure, I'll give it to them. You're welcome.
Good evening, Mariesta Pena Salinas, 715 Miller, 709 O'Blade, and 3318 Compton Drive. I'm very concerned that this is being published, and I know that I shared it with one of the council persons, making it sound, misleading people to believe that the past mayor is still the present mayor. And this is very offensive, where he talks about not labeling, getting a label. My concern is, I had a friend who graduated from Mission, the first movie star from Mission, Thimmy, that, and Thimmy Silver. All the years that Thimmy have been in council, never was any recognition given to Thimmy that, who suffered the worst of the worst. He made it. He was a big movie star with colors, history, blues. There's no recognition for Thimmy, nada. There was nothing for the 30-30 baseball park, which is another thing I have addressed with past council. We needed to do 30-30, a plaque for Tom Landry. Not personal political gain, that's all I keep seeing. No, this continues to say it was just a big man with a big heart, and all the things he did, and it's about hee-hee-hee, never giving the council. So, I'm very disappointed, because I've gotten a lot of feedback from this, and I just wanted to share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council before the council? Have any issues, anything that is not on the agenda? There's nobody that wants to address under citizens' participation? I do know that we have an individual that has informed us that he wants to participate in citizens' participation via media, and he is filing the request under the American Disability Act. Disability Act, and it's going to be part of our accommodation as an all-inclusive city to be able to allow individuals to actively participate in the city government. So. Ms. Carrillo, you're appointed by the chair as a representative of the city for liaison purposes for the ADA person.
Yes, Mayor, I will be calling Mr. Jesus Mendoza.
Hello?
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, Mayor.
Hi, Mr. Mendoza, this is Ana Carrillo, City Secretary, City of Mission.
Uh-huh.
I have you now on speaker, where you can address the mayor and the council.
Mr. Mendoza, you are recognized by the chair under citizens' participation.
Mayor, uh, city council, my name is Jesus Mendoza, and my phone number is 583-712. I have been phone-bound for more than seven years with a light threatening electro-sensitivity. Exposure to the microwave radiation emitted by cell phones, Wi-Fi, and wireless computers causes me swelling of biological organs, swelling of face and eyes, symptoms of heart attack and stroke. Flu and allergy symptoms, rashes and loss of skin, and stomach, sleeping, vision, hearing, speech, memory, concentration, and breathing problems. I have a history of light threatening swelling of heart, and the swelling inside my skull has been so severe as to push an eye out of its socket. I'm in pain all the time, this is a horrible way to die. My electro-sensitivity has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by courts as a physical medical condition and as a disability. And conclusively, that the wireless devices used by our kids are causing harm even to adults. Electro-sensitivity is reaching epidemic proportions. Even when children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, judges, and even the former general director for the World Latinization became electro-sensitive, most doctors continue misdiagnosing, mismedicating, and mistreating the harm being caused on children by microwave radiation. Recently, a doctor denounced how if her kids had not been diagnosed with electro-sensitivity, her kids could have been misdiagnosed, mismedicated, and mistreated, and for the rest of their lives. How her son, because of his aggressiveness, could have spent the rest of his life in a mental hospital? And how her kids are the tipper the iceberg for the millions of children that have now been misdiagnosed, mismedicated, and mistreated for the harm caused by microwave radiation? In my family, we have several children born with brain damage. The common thing in these children is that their mothers were users of cell phones or pregnant. The number of children with brain damage has increased from 1 in 10,000 to 1 in 50. And scientists are warning that if we continue exposing children and pregnant ladies to wireless radiation, in a few years, we might have no child left without brain damage, and by the time parents realize this danger, we are bound to lose many of our kids. I want to reach out to parents of sick children to share this medical and scientific evidence proving the harm being caused on children by exposure to microwave radiation, so they in turn can share this information with their doctors, through the possibility that their kids' health problems are not caused by exposure to microwave radiation. My phone number is 583-712, and my name is Jesus Mendoza. Please look at wearetheevidence.org. Our kids cannot defend themselves from this aggression. Thank you very much for allowing me to be by phone.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza, for participating in the... Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Anybody else wants to participate in citizens' participation on any issue that's not on the agenda? Anybody wants to participate on the citizens' participation? I'm going to move along to the next agenda item. I'm going to move around the agenda item. I would want to call consent agenda item 2.3. 2.3, Ms. Carrillo, can we work on approval of ordinance 4737?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, council, item 2.3 of the consent agendas, approval of the ordinance of the city council of the city of Mission, amending the terms of office for the 2050 Committee, All-Inclusive Committee, Beautification Committee, Cemetery Board, Downtown Revitalization Committee, Former Elected Officials Committee, Millennium Committee, Raw Water Committee, Recycling Board, Wellness Advisory Board, and Workforce Readiness Committee. And also to amend the qualifications for membership for the Raw Water Committee and ordering other provisions relating to the subject. Mayor, council, basically what we're doing is we're staggering the terms of what was going to be the newly appointed members, which will be taking place at this meeting, so that they can be staggered, and that will integrate and orient new board members to the culture of the board. And also due to the complexity of the Raw Water Committee, Mayor, we are asking the residency requirements for this committee to be amended to include members who live outside of Mission or in the county of Hidalgo.
But within the Hidalgo County.
Yes, sir, within the Hidalgo County. And so staff and active city manager are recommending approval of this ordinance.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any final questions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4737 is approved.
Thank you.
And then I want to move over to board appointments, 3.4.
Mayor, council, yes, we've got quite a few members here with us that will be appointed. So as I call the committee and I call their names, if they would like to, please come forward.
Once your name is called, please come forward to the front. We would like to at the end have all the new board members and old board members, and every board member that gets appointed today in a comprehensive picture, also for the record. Ms. Carrillo, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, the first board is the 2050 Committee. Mayor's recommendation is to appoint Joel Angel Garcia Jr., Chris Inahosa, Jaime Gutierrez, city staff Melia Hernandez, and Robert Inahosa from city staff. And the city council position will be Councilwoman Jessica Ortega Ochoa.
Next one?
The next one, Mayor, is the All-Inclusive Committee. Mayor's recommendation is to appoint Mr. Jorge Joel Flores, Zoe Jeremy Alanis, Melissa Cerda, Brady Mayes, and Lucia Leo Diaz, and appoint Councilman Gus Martinez to the city council position. Beautification Committee. Mayor's recommendation, appoint Maria Esther Salinas, Juan Arperez Jr., Rolando Reyna III, James Enriquez, Hilda Flores, Jessica Iglesias, and Joe Luis Sanchez. Citizens Advisory Committee. Mayor's recommendation, reappoint Rosie Lopez, Lorenzo Garza, Yolanda Martinez, Roy Vela, and Roxanne Mendez, and appoint Maria Lisette Flores to the vacant southeast position, term to expire December 31st, 2019.
And we do have an opening here for southeast section, so anybody from, they can hear me on live Facebook, if you live in the southeast section of Mission, if you were interested, come by at City Hall and apply for the position to be considered for the Citizens Advisory Committee. Go ahead, Ms. Carrillo.
The city of Mission, possible. Mayor's recommendation, appoint Martha E. Portillo and Angelo De la Garza, and these are to replace Rosalinda Olivares and Natalie Watu, who resigned from the board. These terms are to expire December 31st of 2019. Civil Service Commission. Mayor's recommendation, appoint Cynthia Pacheco.
Yes, we need it.
Downtown Revitalization Committee. Appoint David Garza, Margarita de la Fuente, Carlo Garza, Eli Bassan, Sangros Amora, and Councilman Ruben Plata to the council position. Former elected officials. Mayor's recommendation, former mayor Richard Perez, former council members Maria Elena Ramirez and Leo Olivares. City council position will be Mari Gonzalez Garza. Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Advisory Board. Mayor's recommendation, reappoint Jamie Connolly and Charles Ike Austin, reappoint Ramon Rosales, and appoint Jonathan Warmeister to the judge position. Mission Economic Development Authority. Reappoint David Dianda, Mario Garza, Councilman Gus Martinez as the alternate to the mayor position, and appoint Mr. Ruben Arcarte and Nora Longoria. Mission Economic Development Corporation and Mission Education Development Council, these are the same board members. Reappoint David Dianda, Sonia Trevino, Mario Garza, Pete Caramillo, Councilman Gus Martinez as the alternate to the mayor position, and appoint Balde Morales and Aissa Garza. Mission Historic Preservation Commission. Appoint Ruby Ann Martinez, Norma Linda Vega, and Randy Sanchez. Mission Rail Bridge Advisory Board. Appoint Mr. Jim Barnes to replace Mr. Jose Garza, who resigned, term to expire December 31st, 2019. Parks and Recreation Board. Reappoint Tony Guerrero, and appoint Javier Longoria, appoint Rick Venancia, term to expire December 31st, 2019, and appoint Amir Asayed to replace Mr. Rolando Reyna, term to expire December 31st, 2020. Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor's recommendation, reappoint Diana Isa Gire, and appoint Javier Barrera, appoint Deborah Lee Alvarez, term to expire December 31st, 2019, and appoint Jose Luis Morin, term to expire December 31st, 2020. Recycling Board. Appoint Christina Garza, Monica Garcia, Crystal Garcia, and Eric Eli Olivares and Excel Martinez. Shory Golf Course Advisory Board. Reappoint John Lopez and Antonio Canha. Spear Memorial Library Board. Reappoint Lina Cantucruz and Whitfield and Linda Frazier, and appoint Lourdes Garcia, term to expire December 31st, 2019. Tax Increment Reinvestment Board, the TERS Board. Mayor's recommendation, reappoint Richard Hernandez and appoint David Penoli, and appoint Mr. Luis Alberto Ortega. Temporary Aggie and Longhorn Band Committee. Mayor's recommendation, Mission CISD Band Director, Mr. Carlos Garcia, CISD Band Director, Mr. Mark Perea, and La Jolla Band Director, Ruben Adame. Traffic Safety Committee. Reappoint Eduardo Alambidi and Francisco Rivera, appoint Jesus Diaz and Luis Moreno, term to expire December 31st, 2019. Youth Advocacy Advisory Board, the Mission Boys and Girls Club Board. Reappoint Jonathan Ocaña and Annette Ortiz. Wellness Advisory Board. Appoint Coniza Foster, Monica Jean Alanis McGinnis, Ken Dawson, Robin Salas, and Juan Rahardam. Zoning Board of Adjustments. Reappoint Guillermo Martinez, and appoint Romeo Gonzalez Jr. and Terry Mavis to the member position, and reappoint Julian Gonzalez as an alternate, and appoint Mr. Jose Pepe Garcia and Elude Reyna to the alternate positions. Mayor, council, these are the board of agreements as recommended by Mayor Canha.
We have a motion to approve the appointments.
I'm going to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and second to approve all the appointments as presented by the mayor. And this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Appointments are approved. You and the council?
Here.
Okay. Out of the group, the other side of the table. Charlie?
[INAUDIBLE]
Miracles to happen!
Miracles to happen! I'm finding them all.
Okay.
Right here, Mayor, right here.
I'm finding them all.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Where's Louis?
Congratulations!
You go, Mission!
Pepper, you can step over the wall.
Zoe, I think you can come up?
Yeah.
I can stand on the chair.
But you can announce it.
Is it directed, Mayor?
Here.
Everybody ready? Everybody right here? Can everybody find your window?
Find a window.
Joey's quiet.
Yeah, woof, that is...
Nellie, Nellie, Nellie needs to get the control.
Got to get the record right.
Okay, everybody that's over here?
Three, two, one, smoke!
All right, we're going to move, we do one more. Okay, right here. Three, two, one.
I know.
One last again.
I want to be next to the mayor.
Three, two, one.
Okay.
Yay!
Glad to see you, glad to see you. How you doing?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations, thank you. Bye, friends.
Hey, how you doing? Glad to see you. How you doing? Mary, I'm glad to see you too.
Oh, yes, good, that's...
Hi, Zoe, I'm glad to see you.
He's going to come to sit down and...
Just to check it out.
That's good.
Did you...
What?
Oh.
Tell the junk.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Can we lower the screen up?
I may before, I may. Before I call your agenda item, I need to...
Another slide out.
Yes, sir, we made it, yeah?
I will do the best I can.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir. Yes, 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 sir. Thank you. I do want to also recognize our Mission Housing Authority, the direct mayor appointment, Irma Flores. Irma, you're here, so come over here.
[CHEERING]
And the other appointee is Connie Garza, also. The Mission Housing Authority is a separate entity of the city of... That's good. Okay. Hi, Zoe, I'm glad to see you.
He's gonna come to sit down and listen to you?
Just to check it out.
Yeah, that's good.
Did you?
What?
Oh.
Tell the judge.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Lower the screen up. I may be before, I may. Before I call your agenda item, I need to. I need to. Yes, sir, we made it, yeah?
I will do the best I can.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Captification.
Yes, 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 sir. Thank you. I do wanna also recognize our Mission Housing Authority, the direct mayor appointment, Irma Flores. Irma, you're here, so come over here. And the other appointee is Connie Garza, also. The Mission Housing Authority is a separate entity of the City of Mission. However, the appointment for the boards are meritorial appointments for the board. So, there is a connection, that's why it's called Mission Housing Authority, you know, as far as that is concerned, so. But we have two new board members coming on board, and keep in mind that we want housing for all. That's gonna, that's my philosophy, you know. Affordable housing is here already, you know, and the more, the more housing that can we have, we have multiple projects already there, but we're expecting more. We will have no single person homeless in Mission, okay? That's what I want. That's the expectation, and I know that the council is asking the council, I think you want the same thing. We don't want them on the streets. We want them for, for them to be housing, whatever, however we can do it, through grants and fundraisers, nonprofit, you know, we have nonprofits and so forth, as far as that is concerned. But I do not want a single person homeless in Mission. As far as that is concerned, it's not, not good for, for the city, and it's not good for that person that's out there in the cold, or in the heat, you know, in our, in our way. So, having said that, thank you for coming on board, and I will continue now. I may, I will call your agenda item now. The Section 1.0 Public Hearing, 1.1 Public and Zoning Recommendation, Mr. Acevedo, Conditional Use Permit.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the Texas Citrus Fiesta Fun Fair. This is at 807 North Conway Avenue, also known as the Leo Peña Placita Park. The property is owned C3, and the event will take place January 26th of 2019, and the applicant is the Texas Citrus Fiesta. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the Leo Peña Placita Park, as I previously mentioned. Texas Citrus Fiesta organizers will be having their annual fun fair event on January 26th of next year. The fun fair will include various vendors, the vaqueros cook-off, and other food vendors. There will be continued trash pickup throughout the event, and the proposed hours of operation are 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Parking for this event will be provided both onsite and within the central business district. The zoning code requires that any fun fair which is considered an amusement be at least 300 feet away from the nearest residence. There are residential homes to the south of the proposed site, so a waiver of that requirement is needed. Security for the event will be, as in the past, Mission PDU officers are hired by the Texas Citrus Fiesta people. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager recommending approval, subject to the waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement from residential neighbors, that they comply with all health and fire codes, and that they meet the noise, amusement, and entertainment and other related codes. This is a public hearing, item 1.1A is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and for the record, name and address. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? There being nobody coming to the podium, at this I close the public hearing and I open it for discussion by any other council persons.
I'll move to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a second to approve ordinance 4738. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 4738 is approved. 1.1B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the Texas Citrus Fiesta Carnival. This street carnival will be at 200 North Sherry Road, being approximately 7.32 acres out of Lot 185, John H. Sherry subdivision, the property is owned C3, general commercial, and the event will take place January the 13th of 2019 through January the 28th of 2019. Texas Citrus Fiesta is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at 1,000 feet east of Sherry Road, along the north side of Victoria Avenue, this can be seen there in red on your, on your monitors. Texas Citrus Fiesta organizers have been given permission to have their annual carnival on the vacant lots of the Mission Event Center subdivision. They wish to set up, a couple of days prior, they're gonna be setting up January the 13th and through the 16th. One of the things that they do is they go in there and clean up the place prior to setting up, and then they're gonna be having the carnival from January the 17th, ending the carnival on the 28th. And the hours of operation will be weekdays from 5:30 to 10:30, and weekends from 1 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Parking for this event will be provided onsite. Staff does encourage that no parking signs be placed along Victoria Drive and along the internal boulevards. The parking for the event will be just north of, of the carnival area, the carnival area is gonna be further south along Victoria, and there will be additional overflow parking on the, on the lot just south of the Mission Event Center. One of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to keep the carnival as farther away as from, from those homes as possible, so we chose, we chose a site behind the bank and behind Raising Canes. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and city manager recommending approval to the, subject to the installation of a perimeter fence so that they can stop any trash from flying away to the surrounding areas. We're also asking that they put no parking signs along Victoria Avenue and in the interior boulevards, and that they meet the noise, insurance, and other related codes that come along with having a carnival. This is a public hearing, item 1.1B is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request, the conditional use permit request? Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? Nobody's coming to the podium, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it for discussion by any other council persons.
I'll move to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a second to approve ordinance 4739. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 4739 is approved. 1.1C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item 1.1C, we are requesting that no action be taken at this time. The applicant requested that we wait until 2019, early 2019, to act on this item. He's requesting a hearback from the ATF, the Alcohol and Tobacco and Firearms Division. So, at this time, I'm gonna be requesting that we not take any action on this item.
Point of order, Mr. Flores, I know it's a public hearing, can you guide us into, do we just take no action on the public hearing, or we don't call the public hearing and we, and it's a...
That's correct, Mayor. Yes, sir.
At this time, then, I'm gonna call 1.1D as a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item 1.1D, this is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a home occupation. This is for freight dispatching service from 4206 San Gravial Street, Apartment 7306. This is on Lot 2, Sherland Plantation Groves, Number 6 subdivision. It is within the Sherland Plantation PUD, and the applicant is Importex LLC, in care of Luis Calderon. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the Leo Peña Placita Park, as I previously mentioned. The Texas Citrus Fiesta organizers will be having their annual fun fair event on January 26th of next year. The fun fair will include various vendors, the vaqueros cook-off, and other food vendors. There will be continued trash pickup throughout the event, and the proposed hours of operation are 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Parking for this event will be provided both onsite and within the central business district. The zoning code requires that any fun fair which is considered an amusement be at least 300 feet away from the nearest residence. There are residential homes to the south of the proposed site, so a waiver of that requirement is needed. Security for the event will be, as in the past, Mission PDU officers are hired by the Texas Citrus Fiesta people. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are recommending approval, subject to the waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement from residential neighbors, that they comply with all health and fire codes, and that they meet the noise, amusement, and entertainment and other related codes. This is a public hearing, item 1.1A is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this request, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and for the record, name and address. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? There being nobody coming to the podium, at this I close the public hearing and I open it for discussion by any other council persons.
I'll move to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve, and a second to approve ordinance 4738. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 4738 is approved. 1.1C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item 1.1C, we are requesting that no action be taken at this time. The applicant requested that we wait until 2019, early 2019, to act on this item. He's requesting a hearback from the ATF, the Alcohol and Tobacco and Firearms Division. So, at this time, I'm gonna be requesting that we not take any action on this item.
Point of order, Mr. Flores, I know it's a public hearing, can you guide us into, do we just take no action on the public hearing, or we don't call the public hearing and we, and it's a...
That's correct, Mayor. Yes, sir.
At this time, then, I'm gonna call 1.1D as a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item 1.1D, this is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a home occupation. This is for freight dispatching service from 4206 San Gravial Street, Apartment 7306. This is on Lot 2, Sherland Plantation Groves, Number 6 subdivision. It is within the Sherland Plantation PUD, and the applicant is Importex LLC, in care of Luis Calderon. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located a half a mile east of Sherry Road, along the south side of San Gravial, within the San Pedro Apartments located at the Sherland Plantation. The applicant would like to operate a freight dispatching office from his residence. All business would be done online, and his operation will operate from a computer that's inside of his dining room. If approved, there will be no outside traffic generated via this conditional use permit. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday from 8 a.m. to 7 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday from 8 a.m. to 3 p.m. The applicant will be the only one that will be operating this operation. Parking is held in common at the residential multifamily complex, and it is meeting code. We did get a letter from the people from the Sherland Plantation stating that they do not object to the proposed business. They don't object because there's not gonna be any outside traffic that's gonna be coming in, so we do have that letter on record. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for one year to assess this new business. We're also asking that they comply with Section 1.56-1 of the zoning code, which limits the signage that's allowed on a residential structure to no more than a one-by-one affixed to the door. We're also recommending that they acquire a business license prior to starting their operation. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? Nobody's coming to the podium, so at this time I close the, close the public hearing and open it for further discussion by any of the council persons.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Any final notes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance 4740 is approved. Open 1.1E.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through convenience store. This would be Las Palmas Number 5, at 1401 North Conway, Suite B. This is Lot A of Block 230 of the Mission Original Townsite subdivision. The property is owned C3, and Las Palmas Meat Market Incorporated, in care of Norma de la Rosa is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of 14th Street and Conway. The applicant is proposing to lease a 22-by-32 drive-through convenience store adjacent to Optima Tires. This can be seen there on the aerial. The last CUP that was issued at this location was done so on April 13th of 2015. It was given for a period of life of use to the previous operator, however, since the CUP is not transferable, the new owner, in this case, Ms. Norma de la Rosa, would like a conditional use permit to be considered under her name. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 10 a.m. to 12 a.m., and Saturday and Sunday from 10 a.m. to 1 a.m. And total four employees will man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. We did get two calls from concerned neighbors that live within the area. Their concern was that there's a lot of loose flying debris they associated to the drive-through business that's currently operating there. Taking in consideration those concerns, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve the drive-through business, however, they wanted to limit the hours to midnight, which is consistent with the others, and they also granted a one-year approval to assess the debris issue that has arisen in that corner.
Is this a result of paving, or is it a result of non-clinginess?
We really haven't been able to determine if it's really from the drive-through, because if, if, if you've seen the drive-through, people go in and out, and we think it may be more related to the tire shop that's there in the corner, because people that go into the drive-through, get their goods, put them in their car and drive off, they're not, they're opening chips or sodas or anything, I mean, they're gonna get their goods and leave. And aren't there, there's a, a car wash right there at the minute? There's a car wash slash tire shop next to it at the, at the corner there. Probably from there. It's probably from there, correct. Staff is, staff and city manager recommending approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation to assess this new operator and to monitor the loose debris issue. We're also asking that the new operation cease all activity at midnight, which would be consistent with other drive-throughs. This is a public hearing, item, item 1.1E is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit request? I do not see anybody coming to the podium, so I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and open it for any questions from any other council persons, or entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4741. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. 1.1F.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to designate an area as a mobile food park for operation of mobile food units. This is at 1805 West Tuma Road, a 2.80 acre tract of land, more or less, out of Lot 28-1, West Edition, a Sherland subdivision. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Juan Quintanilla. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of West Tuma Road and Inspiration Road. The applicant is proposing a mobile food park to offer food truck owners the opportunity to sell their products on a commercial space with paved parking, restrooms, and all the utilities necessary to hook up a mobile food truck. Recently, a similar CUP was approved by the P&amp;Z on November 14, 2018, at the Seed and the Five-by-Five Brewing Company facility. If approved, based on the current ordinance, each mobile food truck that will be operating, if approved, will have to come in and apply for their own conditional use permit. With regards to parking, the applicant is showing 32 paved parking spaces, which is about four parking spaces per mobile food trailer, which is consistent with the parking requirements for a small business. The proposed hours of operation would be from 6 a.m. to 10 p.m. on weekdays, and from 6 a.m. to midnight on weekends. There will be no sale of alcohol from this site, and we are asking, there was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval for two years on this item. It was recommended that they go for two years, since it is a fairly substantial investment. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval for a two-year reevaluation to assess their new operation, that they comply with all landscaping requirements, and one of the concerns that they had were the restrooms, the location of the restrooms were too close to the residential subdivision abutting the subject site on the south side, so they wanted them to be moved further north. There will be a buffer between the commercial and the residential aspect of this area, but they just wanted us to work with the developer and to relocate the restrooms a little bit further north, farther away from the residence. We did talk to the developer, and he's receptive, and he's willing to make that change. This is a public hearing, item 1.1F is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit request? I do not see anybody coming to the podium, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it for any other questions from any other council persons, or entertain a motion.
I move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4742. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for Kona Ice Mobile Food Unit. This would be at various commercial, public, and institutional sites. The applicant is Mr. Jesse Ruiz, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On December 12th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. Kona Ice Mobile Food Unit will be located in various commercial, public, and institutional sites. Mr. Ruiz has purchased into the Kona Ice franchise and is a sole authorized vendor for the Mission area. However, in order to operate his business, a conditional use permit needs to be considered. This is something that he needs for his franchise. They're requesting that he be in, in order with all the city requirements. Mr. Ruiz has alerted staff that he will not have a fixed site, nor will he be driving around the streets of Mission, that is, the residential streets. Mr. Ruiz intends to help local organizations such as, such as public schools, charter schools, religious organizations, daycare facilities, and other nonprofits, organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club. The way that Mr. Ruiz operates is that he'll get with these businesses, ask for their permission to help out during any particular scheduled event that they may have, and then at the end of the day, Mr. Ruiz will cut them a percentage of whatever sales come in. Mr. Ruiz will be the only part-time employee that will be, and one other part-time employee will be manning the operation. The hours of operation will vary depending on the organization that Mr. Ruiz will be partnering with. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and city manager are recommending approval, subject to a one-year approval, that they that they cannot operate in a residential zone and that they comply with all building, fire, and health codes, and that they also acquire a business license, and that they not put any chairs or tables outside of their truck. This is a public hearing item. Item 1.1G is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? I do not see anybody approaching the, the podium, therefore I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it for, for any comments from any of the council persons or entertain the motion.
Is the, Mr. Azavero, is the owner of the truck here?
Yeah, looking, Mr. Ruiz is here in the audience.
Okay. I just have a question, sir. Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure and make it clear that wherever you do park, I'm sure there are areas in commercial places that you all be very leery and careful with children and people that are coming to purchase the ice cream.
The truck is equipped with a safety lights all around. And like I said, it's gonna be like in schools and we're gonna plan it out ahead of time.
Okay. So it's planned events and stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I want to approve.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance forty-seven forty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Ordinance forty-seven forty-three is approved. Moving right along, I'd like to call 2.0 Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda 2.1, 2.2, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7. But before I entertain the motion, is there any council person that would like to pull any of them, those numbers that have agenda items that I just called? If not, I will entertain the motion to approve the consent agendas.
More to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items as indicated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All items are approved to include ordinance.
Forty-seven forty-four for item 2.6.
Forty-seven forty-four for item 2.6 for the record. Okay? I will call 3.0 Approval and Authorization, 3.1, Mr. Azavero, Homestead Exemption Variance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is a homestead exemption variance of a six-point-oh-three acre tract of land out of lot, out of a six-point-eight-three acres out of Lot eleven, Del Monte Irrigation Company land in Portion fifty-one. This is at eleven hundred South Schubach Road. The property is owned AOI and Hector Rodriguez is the applicant. The, the property is located along the west side of Schubach Road, about a half a mile south of One Mile South Road. The flag-shaped lot has a total of six-point-oh-three net acres. On November tenth, two thousand and fourteen, the city council passed the homestead exemption ordinance, which allows for homesteads to be granted various waivers of the city's subdivision requirements, if and only if the lot that is being proposed is for the applicant's personal, single-family home. In this case, we did speak to Mr. Rodriguez and his intentions are to build a home that would be his primary residence. With regards to water, the applicant is proposing to connect to an existing eight-inch waterline that's located along Schubach Road. For his water services, this does fall within the AWAS CCN jurisdiction, so the water services will not be provided by the City of Mission. With regards to sewer, there are no sewer lines within the area. The nearest sewer line is at the intersection of One Mile South and Schubach Road, which is about half a mile away. So being that there are no sewer lines within the area, we are granting him permission to have a sanitary septic for this project. He does comply with the minimum requirements that are required of, to be on a sanitary septic system. With regards to streets, storm and storm drainage, the subject site does have fronted to Schubach Road, which is considered to be an eighty-foot rideaway with the street to be widened up to fifty-five feet of pavement in the near future. So one of the things that we are gonna request from Mr. Rodriguez is that he provide an additional twenty feet of rideaway for the future widening of Schubach Road. The street lighting requirement is also waived via the homestead exemption, as are the park fees. We are recommending approval of the homestead exemption variance, subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variance requirements, which include an affidavit, an affidavit to be signed and recorded stating that this would be his primary residence. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Is there any discussion by any of the council person? I'd like to entertain the motion.
More to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 3.1 Homestead Exemption Variance is approved. Mr. Azavero.
Thank you.
3.2 Enter into Consultant Services in Agreement with H.R. Bert Peña. Ms. Lerma.
Yes, sir. 3.2 is the authorization to enter into consulting services with, consulting services agreement with H.R. Bert Peña to provide federal representation in extending the City of Mission Presidential Permit. In nineteen seventy-eight, the City of Mission was granted a presidential permit to construct, operate, and maintain an international vehicular and rail bridge within the City of Mission. In July of two thousand and eleven, the U.S. Department of State extended the permit cancellation date for ten years until July, two thousand and twenty-first. Mr. Peña would be essential in providing federal representation in the pursuit of extending the presidential permit for an additional ten years. The initial term of the agreement would be for a period not to exceed three months or no later than March thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen, at a compensation of five thousand dollars per month. Services provided after the three-month term will be on a, on an as-needed basis and paid at the rate of two hundred dollars per hour. Staff is seeking direction from the council. I believe the council received his credentials in your packets.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from any of the council persons?
I'm very impressed with the resume from this gentleman, but I'm just concerned when we have something in place right now, what is Mr. Villarreal doing? Isn't that pretty much the same thing?
Hold on. The, the, the request for this is that he is stationed in Washington, D.C. Mr. Peña is, is a lawyer from Washington, D.C. And the intent of, of this consultant is for him to serve while, instead of us sending teams back, back and forth from Mission to, to, from Mission to, to Washington, D.C., he will serve as, as the interim, since we are going to need to do aggressive, aggressively address the, the fact that, that the, the permit is gonna expire in two thousand and twenty-one. You know, so, so we have to do that. And that's why, that's why we noticed in, in his contract, it's, it's for the next three months, because in the next three months, we're planning to go as a team on, in the second week in March to DC to go feel the State Department to see how, you know, what, what is it, we're, and, and I wanna spin off the, the workshop that we have for next week. What, and the purpose of the workshop next week is to be able to compile what we have done so far toward the, toward the bridge and what we're going to plan to do in the future and when we're gonna be able to, to be at construction level as far as that is concerned. So, so that, that is, that is the intent of, of this consultant perm. But to answer your question, Mr. Villarreal is a consultant, but he operates out of the answer to his bridge, you know, here in the, in the valley, you know, as far as, as, as far as that is concerned. So we actually, it's gonna be, he's gonna be our ears and, and our contact from, from Washington, D.C. on behalf of the City of Mission.
Can we wait on this until we do the, the workshop?
The only problem is that we have to show in good faith to the, to the, to the federal government that we're taking goodwill efforts to be able to, to extend our, our permit, because our permit is gonna be, I don't know if you, if you ever, if you've seen the letter from the State Department as far as that is concerned, you know? Now, if, if, to answer your question, yes, we can, we can wait till, we can wait till the, till, till then and, and then, and, but the next city council meeting will not gonna be until January, you know? So we, we wanna prepare a package, a strategic action plan toward the building of the bridge.
I have a question.
You have a question, Mr. Ochoa?
I would like to see if we could maybe pull this item and move it towards executive session, because I have questions that I'd like to ask all of us together.
Point of order.
Mayor, if, if there are legal questions, we can take this into executive regarding legal consultation with attorney if there are legal questions regarding this agreement.
Okay. Can, can, guide me on this. Can we hold this agenda item to when we call the executive session so we can take care of all of the other agenda items and then we take it for discussion with it?
Yes.
There's no problem, Mayor.
Okay. So I'm gonna move out of 3.2 as far as, and then we'll call it back, Ms. Lerma. 3.3.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Item 3.3, authorizes, authorizes the purchase of one twenty-seventeen Hino three-eight container handler truck via buyboard contract five twenty-one dash sixteen from the City Sanitation Department. This truck will be used for transporting dumpsters throughout the city. Estimated cost is a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five with seventy-seven cents. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Is there any question by any of the council persons?
Mayor, I want to approve.
We have a motion to approve item 3.3. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of authorization to purchase Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you.
3.5 Authorization to Purchase Self-Continued Breathing Apparatuses, SCBA. Mr. Chief Sanchez.
Mayor, Council. Item 3.5 Authorization to Purchase Self-Continued Breathing Apparatuses Bottles from, from Metro Fire Apparatus, Inc. via buyboard contract five twenty-four dash seventeen for the Mission Fire Department to purchase five ten-minute SCB bottles, twenty-five thirty-minute SCB bottles, three sixty-minute SCBA bottles, at a total cost of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I want to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of a SCBA. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're authorized to purchase under buy, buyboard contract five twenty-four dash seventeen. Chief Sanchez.
Thank you.
3.6 Tax Collection Report. Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.6 is a tax collection report for the month of October, two thousand and eighteen. Our total tax levy was twenty million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, and the amount of collections as of October thirty-first, it should read October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, is a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-one cents, which is zero point fifty-seven percent of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a question?
I want to approve.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Taxation Collection Report, October, two thousand and eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.7 Authorization to Enter Into Standard Software. Chief Dominguez. Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.7 is Authorization to Enter Into a Standard Software Maintenance Agreement with Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies is a source vendor. Tyler Techno has been the software provider for all records management systems to include computer-aided dispatch, jail, mug shots, barcoding, records management, and field reporting. This agreement will include the servicing of our software modules and upgrades to our current operating system. The total cost for the one-year maintenance would be a hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Staff and city manager request approval for this item.
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.7 is approved. Chief, you're authorized. 3.8, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I come before you seeking authorization to award bids for utility materials for Mission Tennis Center at Berwick Park. The City of Mission has accepted and opened three responses for water, sanitary sewer, and storm materials for the Mission Tennis Center at Berwick Park. Staff recommends award for all utilities to Core and Main LP, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specification. Again, water and sanitary sewer utility bid is at fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars with seventy-six cents, and storm drainage materials at forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars with sixteen cents respectively. Staff recommendation is award bid to Core Main LP for all items. Mayor.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
For approval.
Second.
We have a motion and approval and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're authorized, Mr. Salinas.
Sure, thank you.
3.9 Budget Amendment, General Fund. Ms. Vela.
Item 3.9 is a budget amendment in the General Fund. It's a reclassification of two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars into capital outlay. This amendment is for the purchase of a shelter animal software for the Health Department. It's to assist in the intake of the animals, and it's also to help with the Petco program, the adoption program that they're gonna start doing.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.9 Budget Amendment approved, ma'am. 3.10 Request to, authorized to request for qualification for architectural services.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I bring before you item 3.10 Authorization to Request for Qualification for Architectural Services. The scope of the work to include concepts of a train and bus depot, train routes, bus routes, new purpose for the Mission Community Center, museum expansion, face to the Leo Peña Placita Park, two-story parking lot in downtown, public safety training center, and other facilities on as-needed basis. Staff and acting city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, the request for qualifications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Villamans. 4.0 Unfinished Business. We have a, a tabled item at eleven twenty-six eighteen. Mr. Perez, are we ready for, to address this? We are. So I need a motion to get the item out of the table, please. Do I have a motion?
More to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion to, to remove the item from the table, and it's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.1 Now is called as approval for interlocal agreement. Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have before you item 4.1, which is the approval of interlocal agreement between City of Mission and Mission Consolidated Independent School District regarding Mission Lions Park and Hollis Rutledge Senior Park. This is for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year for baseball and softball practice. There's no cost to MCISD. This agreement will nullify any agreement previously presented for approval at Mission School Board meeting scheduled on November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Staff and acting city manager approve this supplemental.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4.1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.2 I will entertain a motion to, to bring the item out of the table.
More to approve, to move it out of.
We have a motion to move out of the table in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4.2 is removed from the table and is brought and recognized. Mr. Benson.
Yes, item 4.2 is approval of interlocal agreement between City of Mission and Mission Consolidated Independent School District regarding the nodulatory facility at Banworth Park and the Mayberry Pool. This is for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year for swim and dive practice. There's no cost to MCISD. This agreement will nullify any agreement previously presented for approval at Mission School Board meeting scheduled on November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. School Board meeting scheduled on November 14, 2018. Staff and acting city manager approve of the supplemental.
Move for approval, mayor?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4.2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Interlocal is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Under routine manner, 5.0, acting city manager comments. Mr. Perez.
Yes, mayor, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays this season and prosperous new year. Thank everyone for their hard work this year. Staff and directors, thank you for everything that you do for the City of Mission. Thank you.
5.2, the mayor's comment. I want to echo what he just said, you know, happy, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. You know, thank you, staff, for all you've done, and hope that you all enjoyed yourself at the employees' appreciation night, because it was very, very relaxing, and I felt very good about what I saw there. Ms. Lermah, I want to thank you and your staff and anybody else that, Mr. Perez, that had to do something with that, and also the breakfast, the breakfast that, that is a different activity that we've never done before, that I've known of, you know, and that is to split the recognition with the, with the relaxation party for the staff, which I think made a big, big difference from my standpoint, from what I was viewing. And on behalf of the citizens of Mission, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of, all our employees as far as that is concerned, you know. And I do want to also let the public know, thank you for the Patriots for an excellent, excellent season. I know we recognized them earlier, but it always feels great when all this team becomes an ambassador of goodwill for the City of Mission, and our City of Mission is placed on the map statewide and nationally also, as far as that. Without further ado, I'm going to start with 5.3, city council comment. Mr. Martinez, I will start with you.
Thank you, mayor. Nothing further. I pass the comment.
Mr. Plata.
On the mayor's side, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a prosperous 2019.
Ms. Ochoa.
I just want to remind everybody that we need to be really safe with DWI Awareness Month being this month, and so many tragic accidents and deaths going on with drinking and driving. I think that we should all be safe and take others into consideration. Please call Lyft, Uber. We have so many things that we can do now, we should not be drinking and driving. With that being said, I wish everybody a happy holiday and a Happy New Year. 2018 was fantastic for the City of Mission, and 2019 is going to be even better. So blessings to everybody.
Yes. On 5, I want to call 5.2 again in the mayor's comment, because I want to make sure that I, that I make a point that I left out, and it goes back to the board appointments. I do want to make, make the point that I think this is the first time that the board's appointment was done not only by the mayor, but with the council input. We had a workshop prior to that, and as far as, as far as it's concerned, and you saw the people, all the people here, it was a very diverse population that was, that was, that came forth to serve our cities, our city, and advised us on the, on the issues that we have on a daily basis. So I'm looking forward for excellent 2019, very prosperous for the City of Mission, and it looks like we're going to be a very progressive city and continue to do that as we go along. Without further ado, I will call 6.0, executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, section 551, 551.001. I entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we're going to move into executive session. For the record, I need a motion to reconvene.
So move, mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene from executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are reconvening in action.
3.2, mayor?
3.?
2, mayor.
3.2, yeah. I'm calling item 3.2. Ms. Lermah, you don't need to present, because we're not going to take any action as far as that is concerned, and I do want to inform the public that we're going to take up 3.2 in a special meeting to be held on the 27th of December at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, just for the, for the public purposes of case, people that are following us along with the, with the items as far as that is concerned. The other item I'm going to call is 6.1. Mr. Flores, please assist us in the, in the action that we need to take based on our executive session sessions.
Yes, mayor. An item 6.1A deliberation regarding acceptance of city attorney's resignation. We would need a motion to accept city attorney's resignation with the last date of employment being December 28, 2018.
I so move, mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the city attorney's resignation, of course, with regrets, you know. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Mr. Flores, we appreciate your services as a, you know, as a city attorney for the years that you've served us, and on behalf of the citizens of Mission, thank you for all your time and effort, you know, but I, we do want blessings for you in your new endeavors that you want to take as a professional.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay. 6.1B?
6.1B, mayor, is deliberation regarding the appointment, employment duties of city attorney position matters incident thereto pursuant to the discussion executive session. My understanding is that the council will consider this item in that special meeting that you just made reference to set for December 27 at 10:00 a.m., mayor. So no action is needed on this item.
Is that correct, or are you going to?
That was my understanding, that from now till then, we'll, yeah.
We'll figure things out.
We'll figure things out from now till then.
Okay.
But with the intent of getting an interim city attorney and, I guess, figuring out what the future's going to be for the, for the legal department.
Okay. Anyway, we have him till the 28th.
Yes, mayor. Item 6.2.
No action. 6.2.
6.2A deliberation regarding U.S. Customs and Border Protection request for access to real property leased to City of Mission for use as a park pursuant to executive session. We would need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign and execute the waiver of service and waiver of judicial process.
I, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation from the attorney?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the attorney to accept the, and approve the access to real, real property leased by the City of Mission and the parks to the United States Customs and Border Protection Agency. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Of course, for the record, you probably noticed Mr. Plata's not here. He asked to be, to leave, and he had a, an, a conflict in, incident, so, and he was approved to leave. 6.2, item B.
Mayor, on 6.2B deliberation regarding possible acquisition of land, specifically Obley Park, located at 1127 North Van Tisco Avenue for the continued use as a city park pursuant to executive session, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to accept the diocese's offer of conveyance and further authorize mayor to execute all documents necessary to effectuate said conveyance. And the council would also make a finding that it is in the city's best interest to waive the requirement of an appraisal in this matter.
So I hear a motion to accept the recommendation from the attorney?
I so move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 6.3?
6.3A, mayor, my understanding is the mayor was going to address this item.
That's correct, sir. I would like to inform the public that we were notified by the Texas Water Development Board that our EDEP project was, was denied, that we submitted for, for the project as an application for EDEP project number two. And it was based on, on the fact that we have been found, the city has been found as non-compliance on the EDEP project number one, which is the previous EDEP project that we, that we had. And based on that, I'm going to direct the acting city manager that in the next 30 days that he gets together with a financial advisor and staff and come up with a action plan to be able to move from non-compliance to compliance. And that on the next city council meeting in February, that we deal with this in executive session with a draft that we're directing our acting city manager to do. That's, I think that is enough said. And if anybody has any questions or whatever, direct them to our city attorney.